This is a very different tone of episode than we have ever recorded up to this point because I am finally spilling my side of the tea for the city council members and the community of Cadillac to hear my side of the story on 128 East Pine Street. Well, welcome back everyone to the podcast. I have a special guest with me today, my husband Ethan, because this podcast is going to be a heavy one, to say the least.
Yeah.
Gives me a little bit of a safe space to let a lot of things out that are otherwise trying to be silenced. So if you're watching this podcast, I'm sure or listening to this podcast, I'm sure you saw my cryptic messages on my Instagram stories about just an absolute shitstorm that we're in with the city of Cadillac. I know I've talked about this issue several times, even in the episodes that we've released this year, but it's just come to a point that I, you know, I've really tried to stay as professional and silent and obedient as I possibly could in this situation. And it's just reached a point that if we don't release this podcast, it is our worst case scenario.
Yeah.
So. Let's get into it.
Yeah. So I think what we'll try and accomplish today is we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions that I'd like you to expand on. And I think we can kind of dive into each question and spend a little time there and make sure that we try and get your point across to the best of our ability. And so, um, I guess let's go ahead and get started. First question I had for you is why are we recording this, this podcast and this episode?
So we are recording this episode because I have been working for the last several months on getting this property that we own in Cadillac that was functioning as a short-term rental rezoned to the appropriate zoning. It's been a long process and there has been a lot of drama that has been involved in this process from both sides, the city's side and our side. And we, you know, I have just worked tirelessly for the last several months trying to right the wrongs that we had in this situation. You know, and that's required me to, you know, gauge the neighbors' opinions, gauge the public's opinions. I, I've literally, I've dropped mailers in every single one of my neighbors' mailboxes. I have gone with you to every single business downtown to gauge their perspective on short-term rentals. I have communicated with every single city council member, city worker that I possibly could to, you know, address the situation, right the wrongs, handle it to a T, the way that they want it handled.
Shaking their hands after meetings where they were not talking good about us. And I still forced you to get up and shake their hand.
Oh my God, that meeting was so stressful. And we've just, we've reached a point in this and I'll get into the details of like, why the city doesn't like us a little bit further on into this episode. But as it stands today, I have presented our situation in front of the Downtown District Association and got unanimous support from them. I have an overwhelming amount of support from all of our neighbors, all of the businesses. I've gotten letters from as many people as I possibly can, and I represented this entire situation in front of the planning department with, again, unanimous support, unanimous views on how this should be handled. And on Monday night, we went, on Monday night, the city of Cadillac had a city council meeting. We have an attorney on this at this point. The attorney that we have hired works in the same building as the city council and all of the city members. And so we did that specifically so that we would not misstep at all because the beginning of this, we did misstep and we did do things wrong and I did not want that to happen again. And so on the meeting on Monday, I asked both our attorney and the people in the city who have been communicating with us on how we need to appropriately handle this. And I said, look, do I need to be there? And they said, Sarah, you do not need to be there. This is just due process where in their process that they have outlined for rezoning, it requires them to announce a public hearing two weeks in advance so the public can prepare their opinions and the city council can develop their opinion. And they were like, look, it is, and I asked explicitly to both people, I said, is there any chance that they deny this? Like you are telling me with a 100% certainty that I am going to get a public hearing to be able just to be heard, just to present, just so that they can hear our side of the story all the way through. And everyone told me, yes, you are guaranteed that spot. They have never denied a public hearing. That's not the purpose of this. This is just an announcement. It's not a vote. And because I'm absolutely adamant about not messing this up, we went, we drove two hours one way in awful weather up to that city council meeting.
Every trip up there, it seems the weather's been awful.
Yeah, it's, it's foreshadowing. And we get into that meeting and we sit through that meeting where they were discussing PFOS and just listening to, you know, everybody's issues with the fact that all the wells up there, you know, have dirty water and people have cancer. And it was just a really heavy meeting overall. But the very last topic in that meeting was for us just to have our public hearing scheduled. And my goal with us going, of course, was just to be seen, shake hands, make it known that this is very important to us, that we are very attentive, we are plugged in, you know, all like just, I just want them to see my face and I just want them to feel like we were there, like we are plugged into this business. And our lawyer advised us not to talk during the public comments. Our lawyer just said, take notes, observe, listen, you know, do not get up and talk because you will have your moment to talk. They have enough to worry about. Like, don't try and press your issue over everybody else's issues. And I said, okay, okay, we'll sit silent. We'll just make one to shake hands. We won't say anything. Well then, at the end of that meeting on Monday, they go to announce the scheduling of our public hearing. And two of the city council members, one in particular said, I'm ready to deny this today. I don't want to hear. I've developed my opinion. My opinion's not changing. I don't think that we need, I think that we can squash this today. And I'm sitting in the very back and I mean, I just, I literally couldn't sit, like I just stood up immediately because just everything in my body was on fire. And so they deliberated a little bit. The mayor who's been, who's heard me speak, who, you know, was at the planning, she sits on the planning board, who was unanimously approving us moving forward. She really pushed back and was just like, we want to do this the right way. She stood in front of all of us and you're, you know, there's nine people that sit on that planning board or maybe seven, I don't know, but and she's like, and all of them are recommending even after all of this mess, that you guys just hear this girl out. And still, Mr. King and Mr. Ingles on that city council board both said no, that they have developed their opinion, that they do not want to even give me a public hearing, that they just want to deny this today. And that is, that is exactly why we went, because of that just sneaking fear that, you know, this is not going to go, nothing about this has gone the way that it's supposed to. And so they closed that. They said, you know what? We're going to table it. We're going to internally go back in and develop verbiage that allows us to deny a public hearing from even being accessible to this person, which has never been done before from the conversations that we had afterward with the people who work in the city to silence us. And so I now do not have a public hearing scheduled. I am not going to get probably the opportunity to speak in front of the city. And so this is my solution.
Okay. One question I hadn't written down here is, is who is this podcast for? Who is this episode? Who do you hope gets to hear it?
Several people. I think first and foremost, I want to be heard by the city council. I don't want to attack the city council. I don't, I, I think that we have better progress with honey over vinegar. And that's the route that I've tried to go this entire time. And I mean, we sat, we've sat in so many city council meetings at this point in Cadillac, just that have nothing to do with short-term rentals, just to familiarize ourselves with the process. And every single time you watch people get up publicly and just absolutely annihilate the city council. And I know that that's gotta be a hard position to be in.
Specifically, last week, we were there.
Oh my gosh.
That one was rough.
That one was really, really rough.
Didn't want to be a city councilman that day.
I would not have wanted to be a city council member. I mean, you've got people who are standing up with two types of cancer that they are blaming on, you know, the city. I just, I can't imagine being in that position. But I, I don't want to bash the city council. With that being said, I think that we're beating, being treated like incredibly unfairly. And I'm not saying that we didn't make mistakes in this. Like I'm, we will get to that in this episode of the things that we did wrong, but to not be able to right your wrongs.
Yeah.
To not be able to apologize, to not be able to speak, to not, and the reality is, is that they are denying my ability to present to them because they don't want us to operate it as a short-term rental. And that's not what I'm asking at all. It's literally not even the request. So they've developed their opinion on which way they want to vote without even understanding that that's not what I'm asking to begin with. And, and so I'm just trying not to point fingers while also feeling like they are treating us incredibly unfairly. And there's a reason why there's a process in place to hear the public. But what is the point in having that public hearing if you're not even going to hear the public? So, so today, I mean, I'm just hoping that the city council hears this. I fully plan on sending this to News 910 so they can feature it. We have just consumed every single article that has been written about us online in the papers everywhere, just absolutely destroying us as property owners, being the big bad investors that we are. And we've stayed silent. Like we have just tried to handle this as internally and as quietly as we possibly can. And that is not working. And so now we try the opposite.
Yeah. Okay. So we want the news. We want the city council members to give us a fair shake and listen to this. Obviously the public, the residents of Cadillac, we value their opinion. We've talked to many of them, inclusive of many business owners who benefit and have mentioned how much, mentioned to us how much they've benefited from our guests staying at that house and how they've appreciated it and how they've been able to expand their business or they've been able to add on employees or, you know, whatever it may be, which are really feel-good stories, you know, that, that feels great that you, this big bad investor who they think you are, have created this beautiful thing that not only brings great people to the town, it, it benefits the town in such a way. So it just, it's mind-boggling on some of these things that we've, some of these situations we've encountered and some of the people who seem to not agree with that when I don't know how many more people we could get to, to, to say that. So you know, we've kind of, we've covered, kind of covered a little bit of this question, but ultimately, and we don't have to drag this one out, but what are you hoping to get out of this podcast? Like what are you ultimately trying to accomplish here with this?
I think in a best case scenario, I think one, of course, to change the minds of the city council members, to get them to understand that I am very on board to not run this as a short-term rental if that is not what they want. That, that's my best case scenario is that I get to run it as a short-term rental because obviously I love the house. I love hospitality. I love serving people in this way. I love providing communities that, you know, a really special, unique accommodation that isn't a big hotel chain. You know, I, I want to save beautiful houses that deserve to be experienced by several families instead of just one. And so I would love to just get the city council to a place where they're just willing to work with us. Like I, I, you know, if, if they don't want it to be a short-term rental, I, I'm so okay with that. I've made my peace with that. But I don't want this beautiful house to go into foreclosure, you know, and that's the direction that we're headed because we've looked at every single other option of what we can do with this property. And it just has been roadblock after roadblock after roadblock. And then also there are 50 chairs in the city council meetings. And in a best case scenario, I'm just hoping that people show up.
Yeah. Yeah. Because ultimately, I, I don't know for sure, but isn't the role of a city council member not to necessarily develop their own opinion and push that? But isn't it to take information given and present it in, in a way in front of the city? And it needs to be
Objective.
Objective, but it needs to go with the public flow, right? If, if, look, if there's 50 spots in there and 50 people and they're saying, no, okay, that's the, that's what the public has said. But if, if, you know, we get in there and there's a, uh, more people saying, yes, this is what this ought to be. But also if the city planning, like there's been so many times where several members of different councils there have said, there is no other or better fit for such a, a property.
This is the highest and best use.
Highest and best use of said property. So it's like between what the people want, assuming it's good, right? Which they're not even allowing us to.
Dude, we, we know it's, like, we have just knocked on all the doors. Like I have just.
A three-block radius of the house, people that don't even know the house exists, we're knocking on their door.
Yeah, literally.
So I don't know, it just, it, that, that's the frustrating part for me is where it's like, okay, the, the city says it's good, right? The, the people say it's good, but this, this council is saying no, because they've developed a personal opinion, one of which I heard them say, my personal opinion is this. So that, that, that hurts me just a little bit as well.
But in the same breath, I do have justified reason to be upset.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody's denied that.
And well, let's, let's get into that a little bit. So really, yes, I wanna, I really want to hone in on just the fact that if you are, if you live around Cadillac, if you're from Cadillac and you watched us bring this property to life because it was all over TikTok for several months of just people following our journey, like I would, I mean, we would walk into Home Depot and everybody would be like, oh my God, it's the girl who's dating Orange Child. It's like, that's so exciting. Or we'd walk into Clam Lake Brewing while we were renovating it. And everyone's like, oh yeah, how's the project? Like it was just, it was, it's, it's such a masterpiece for the city. That house is just, it's just one of a kind. And I just want it to live on. I just don't want it to rot. And I don't want to be the reason it rots. And so I just, I just want, I'm just hopeful that the city of Cadillac, the, the community of Cadillac, the business owners of Cadillac are frustrated for their own reasons with how things go in the city council and are willing to show up for us come the 18th, when they fully, like they are not giving me a public hearing. I got confirmation on that today that it is going to be a, let's have a meeting to deny this before she even gets to speak. And I'm just going to speak.
Okay. That's news to me. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. That's where we're sitting. So which is, it's them making up the rules in the middle of it. And so let's, let's get in, because I don't want to make them out to be the big bad wolf as if we have never done anything wrong in this situation because we, we absolutely have. But I just feel like when you hear the whole story, I think we've gone just really above and beyond to, to right our wrongs and just to be heard, just to be allowed to exit this project.
Yeah. Why don't you start from the 17 times we drove by the house before we purchased it? And you claiming every single time we had to have this house.
I had to have it.
Wow. It's a beautiful house.
I had to have it. And it has literally kicked me in the teeth for two years straight. It is, it's like the toxic ex I never had. Like it just, it, this project has just taken pieces of me that I just can't believe it's taken. But yes, let's start at the beginning. So what was it? 2022, this project was the first project I ever raised capital for. And if you know anything about using investor capital, it's like, if you get the first project right, you'll never have to need for money again. But if you shit the bed on the first project, you just dug your own grave. And I'm, I feel like I've been fighting to like not shit the bed and also have been simultaneously digging my own grave for the last two years. But but yes, I had to have this project or this property. I mean, the numbers didn't make sense. You know, there was no comps in Cadillac that were luxury, short-term rentals. I was touring properties in Traverse City and Better Markets and Potaski and, you know, all over the place that like made more sense than Cadillac. But this particular house had just been sitting on the market for months and months. It was, if you guys have seen it, it is a work of art. It's a work of art. It is such a gem. It's just one of those things that looks like it should be a museum. And so we decided to move forward on bringing this project to life. At the time, from a regulation standpoint, Cadillac did have an interpretation of the current zoning, but they did not have official short-term regulations in place.
Which was not only common for Cadillac, it was common for the state of Michigan.
Everywhere, everywhere. At that point in time, there was talks of Michigan regulating short-term rentals at the state level. And so all counties, townships, all smaller municipalities were on hold for developing their regulation because they wanted to see what the state was going to do because they didn't want to develop regulation and then just have it squashed by the state immediately after and go through all of that drama. And so everyone was operating with really no regulation in place almost anywhere. Like there was some regulation in places like Traverse City or, or South Haven. But when you're talking some of these smaller places, less tourist-focused places like Cadillac, there was no official regulation. And so I'll include this for the YouTube video if you're listening, but I'll show the map that, that we had at the very beginning that showed that according to the interpretation of the existing zoning that in B2 zoning, short-term rentals were allowed, B2, B1, T2 and T1. And so I, I saw that online when we were looking at the project. And then I started reaching out to other hosts through Airbnb that were in Cadillac because I could see that, okay, even though like this is the current interpretation, like literally none of the Airbnbs in Cadillac are in these zones, zero. Like out of the 20, 30 Airbnb's that were in the city of Cadillac, all of them were in residential areas, of course, around the lakes and things like that. And and so I reached out to other hosts and I'm like, look, I can see this interpretation online, but I also see that you're nowhere near these zones. Like what is the situation with Cadillac right now? And they were like, there's no enforcement, there's no, you know, we've been operating for years in these properties, like there's, you're, you're totally fine. And that property would be a perfect for a short-term rental. And so my biggest regret is not calling the city to just verify this. But I was looking at it and I was saying, look, this is in the correct zoning from this map that I'm looking at as far as I can see. I know this property used to be a commercial property because I've got a loading dock in the side of my property. I know that they knocked a commercial space over and they built this big residential property. And so that would suggest that it's also B2 zoning, right? It's, it used to be a business. And and so both the map that I could see looked like we were zoned B2. Everybody else was operating that wasn't zoned B2 at all. And, and we knew upon purchase, we, we took a commercial loan out on it because even though it was a residential property, it was still commercially lendable. And so we moved forward with the property without calling the city, but checking several other places, checking what they had online, you know, all the things. And so we purchased it, we moved forward on it, we, you know, furnished it and right as we launched it on Airbnb, January of 2023, we immediately got contacted by the city. They sent us a letter to the house, to Orange Cadillac. And I was still in and out of there. I mean, we both were still in and out of there, just training cleaners and whatnot. So we were still receiving the mail at 128 East Pine at that point in time. And we received a letter from the zoning department and they said, look, you're, you're not zoned B2. And we were like, oh my God, like, okay. One, like we were told that there was no enforcement at all of short-term rentals here. And at the time, like we hadn't had to call on any previous property that we owned. Well, we only owned one other property, but I mean, you know, it, it just wasn't common practice at that point in time, which not an excuse, just perspective. And so at that point in time, I was like, oh my God, I'm, whoa, okay. Like what do we have to do to get it zoned B2? You know, like what do we need to do to get this in good standing? And John Wallace, who we were communicating with at that point in time, he was like, it's fine, it's totally fine. We're going to get this rezoned. He was like, not only is there a master plan that's already been drafted up where when that master plan gets released, your property is automatically going to be rezoned to B2. He was like, but it's the highest and best use for that property. So you're just going to have to go in front of a planning department. You're going to have to present your case. You're going to have to get approval from them. And so we were like, okay, great, wonderful. Like this. And this was right after we launched the property. This was over two years ago.
But is that all he had mentioned we had to do?
Yes.
Was go in front of one board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And so Matt, my business partner on this, he, we were down south. We were like in Texas. I remember being in the school bus that we had just bought. And I had another meeting at, at the same time that this planning meeting was scheduled to be. And, you know, again, nobody had made it a big deal. Like everybody was like, this should be a breeze. Like this is in line with the master plan that's coming out. This property, it's the best and highest use. Like you guys have been really cooperative, all the things. And so Matt went into that meeting without me and he didn't go publicly or like in person. He went via Zoom as well. He didn't even have to attend in person. And and after that meeting happened, he was like, yeah, we got a unanimous yes across the board from the planning department. We got sent the paperwork to apply for the rezone, filled that out and got a congratulations from John Wallace. And we, at that point, I thought we were rezoned.
Yeah. Was there any mention, any further action needed to be taken? Talk a little bit more about that part.
None.
Cause that's where I feel a lot of
Confusion started.
Started.
Yeah. That's exactly where it started. If we, I do not know how to make this any more clear. If there was an additional meeting, we have never missed a meeting that we needed to be at, ever. If we knew there was a meeting we needed to attend, we are 100% for those meetings. Like I will cancel everything to make sure that these meetings get addressed. And so if we would have ever been told that there was another meeting, I would not have missed that meeting. But at that point in time, I mean, we were congratulated and then, and then nothing. And I would also like to include, we've now done this twice because I have now, at this point, gone in front of the planning department again to get approval. And even after I got approval from the planning department a second time, no direction on what happens after. No emails, no direction, no advice, no, nothing. It's just.
Hey, make sure to, none of that.
Nothing. No, hey, this is next steps. No, hey, A through Z, this is what you have to do. Nothing.
Yeah.
And again, like, I'm newer to this, you know, we're, you know, five years into real estate investing and like, maybe that's, maybe that's normal. Maybe it's, it's our responsibility to double, triple, quadruple check, you know, the, the things that we need to, to make sure that we've covered all of our tracks. So again, I'm not trying to cast blame on the city for that at all. Because now, like the second time around, I've gotten, I have not missed a single B because I'm literally knocking down everyone's door. Like I am double, triple dialing people. Like I am like, tell me what to do. Tell, like, I need to know every single case scenario. I need to know in-depth. I want to watch past meetings. I want to know exactly what I'm walking into. I just like, the motivation is just different from the first time around because the first time around, everybody, everybody was so casual. You know, everybody was like, this is going to be an easy, breezy, no issues situation. And so we were like, great, awesome. I'm glad you see the vision. So anyway, we, so at this point, I think we're rezoned, right? Like we've gone through the meeting, we've gotten unanimous approval, like we're good to go. And so at this point in time, the city starts developing short-term rental regulations for everyone. Not our property specifically, just the state has decided to not regulate this at the state level. So now it is on the cities and counties to develop their own opinion and regulation. And so the city of Cadillac started that process. And we knew that that was coming down the pipeline as well. I mean, when we had talked to John Wallace, when we were going through the rezone, he, he, that was what he said. He was like, I think it's a great thing that you guys are handling this on this side of things because the second it opens up to all of the other short-term rentals, that will get messy because there will be several that get shut down that completely disregarded, you know, what we had as our interpretation online that are, you know, taking homes away from, you know, low-income housing or whatever the case may be. And he was like, so it's a great thing that you are doing this now. He's like, because when it comes time to handle everybody else's, he was like, it is going to get messy and you guys just need to stay out of it. He's like, because people will point fingers at you.
What great advice.
Yeah. He's like, people will point fingers at you. He was like, you know, you're getting handled as kind of a one-off and people are going to feel a type of way about that. And so the city council is going to have enough on their plate, just stay out of it. And I was like, say less. Like this house is being an absolute monster to run. Like this thing is, it took forever to get the cleaning teams figured out. The, we had washers and dryers and hot tubs. If you guys were following me on social media, you saw the hot tub situation. I mean, I fought that hot tub for literally a year and a half and just everything under the sun went wrong from an operation standpoint, from the property itself outside of city council, right? It was just, I was getting my ass kicked. outside of the city council over the last two years, just running the property. We thought it was haunted, honestly, like, we-
I told your mom the other day, put the Indian corn back in there.
Like, we, we literally, and this is like a little bit of a tangent, but the, we hired an electrician, um, who did a lot of work on the house. And he, the first time he walked in, he was like, my heart hurts in here, like, this is, there's bad voodoo, there's bad juju in this house. And I'm like, oh my God, great.
Well, we gotta remember who that was.
So fair. Um, okay, so, so where did we leave off? So, uh, yeah, so we were told to just stay out of the city council's way in developing the regulation for everyone else. So that was probably April, May of 2023, um, that we kind of wrapped that zoning up. I think it was in March that we actually had the zoning meeting, so probably March, April actually is, is when I thought we were rezoned. And they had said that they were kicking off short-term rental regulations for the city at large and for us to stay out of it. And so I think it was, now looking back, um, I should say, you know, not even May, like, May on, you know, we're just getting our butts kicked trying to get this property to run the way that it needs to run, trying to, you know, understand how to run that size of a property with that many amenities. Um, and that was a handful by itself, but, um, fast forward to, um, I think it was May of 2024, no, it was March of 2024. Andrew sent us the, like, they had released a draft of the master plan online for the city of Cadillac. And at that point in time, like, I had been keeping up with the short-term rental regulations in the city of Cadillac. I knew it was a bloodbath, I knew that people were selling left and right, I knew that people were mad. I was ignoring DMs from people that I was getting that were like, how did you get to continue running while we're getting shut down? Like, and I just was like, I'm staying out of it, like, you can go back and look at our rezone meeting if you want, but like, I'm just, I'm just staying silent, I'm not adding fuel to the fire. And, um, and in March of 2024, I think, is when they released the master plan, or we were sent the master plan that was due to be implemented into the city. The master plan, um, requires a revision every five years, and I think it's been like seven or 10.
The master plan originally from December of 2022?
It's been two years since it's been in the works, right? So, um, but that got released, that draft got released and sent to me. Um, and it showed our property rezoned as B2, you know? So even though, like, I already thought, you know, in my head, the property was already zoned B2, but also, like, this was just a double-
Formality.
Yeah, it's a formality. And also it just shows that, like, it's very in line with, like, in my head, I thought they released it to just prove to all the other short-term rental hosts that, like,
To get them off of us.
Yeah, like, it wasn't spot zoning by any stretch of the imagination, like, this was part of the master plan all along. This is, you know, and, and from my perspective, the city was like very in support of us continuing and nobody else, because we had paid attention to the regulation on the front end. I was wrong. Um, this is where it gets really sticky and frustrating. So I think it was June, May, June of last year, we got sued by the city of Cadillac, out of the blue, to me, out of the blue. We got an email, um, we got letters sent to us that they were opening up a lawsuit against us.
It wasn't a threat to be sued.
It was, you're being sued.
You are.
You are currently being sued by the city.
You're being served.
You're being served. And I was like, what? What do you, like, what do you, I have done everything that you have asked me to. And now you're suing, like, what? Like, did this get lost in the mix? Like, is, is there new members in the council? Like, what, what happened between a year ago when you said congratulations on the rezone to today when you're suing us? Like, uh, you know, I was just, and all of the investors were caught off, everybody was caught off guard. Everyone was like, what, what's happening here? Why are we in this situation? How did we get here? Like, we just went into full scramble mode. And they were like, you have to cancel all your guests, you have to shut this property down, you cannot operate it anymore. And it just all happened so fast, where I just was like, whoa, like, something went south.
And mind you, when we're talking May, we are gearing up for
Summer.
Summer. And, and if you're familiar with Airbnb and travel in Michigan-
100% booked out.
Yeah, 100% booked out, that's where you make the money, so you suffer all winter long. You deal with the guests that are there during the wintertime at, at very slim margins. And, and, and everybody's excited for summer, we're, we're ready, it's game time. You know, it's time to make the money, uh, but it's time to work.
Yeah.
And so to hear it's, you have to shut down right now, um, cancel your bookings. You're not only killing us, uh, but you're ruining however many families' vacations for the summer and try and find a B and B
For 16 people.
For 16, less than one month out from your vacation, or less than 10 days out or whatever it may be. So, yeah, they certainly put everybody in a tricky situation there.
Yes. Um, so at this point, I'm mad, you know, I'm like, master plan draft has been released, making us B2 zoning. We went through the rezone, unanimous approval, like, what, like, what happened, what went wrong? Where, like, where did we make mistakes? Like, I, I don't know. So at that point, we hired a lawyer, obviously. And we were like, dude, like, what? Help, like, I, I just don't know, like, somebody needs to sort this out. Somebody needs to call some people, like, we can't cancel reservations for all of these guests who have had this reservation for this vacation for months. When we were under the impression that we were doing everything right, like, we just were like, wait a minute, like, what's happening? And so that's when everything started coming to a head. So what we had discovered once we had hired the lawyer, is that we had been sent a series of letters, um, that had gone to Matt. And in Matt's defense, he did move primary residences in that time. And from his perspective, I think one went to a business address or something, I don't know. I, I don't know, I don't know much about the letters. They weren't sent to me, they weren't sent to the investors, they were sent to Matt directly. But those letters got ignored. I will say, the one letter that we did receive, it, it was right after the rezone, like, right after we had finished the rezone meeting, it was like, again, April, May of 23. Matt did tell me about that, uh, receiving a letter from the city. And I was like, well, just reach out to John Wallace, like, we obviously already went through the rezone. They, you know, I'm, I'm seeing that all of these other operators in Cadillac are receiving the same letter. Like, I'm sure we're just kind of lost in the mix, because we just got rezoned. And, and so Matt did reach out to John Wallace. Um, and I was like, you know, that was when we were like, running up to Cadillac and getting just cussed out by the mom who had the bachelorette party, and like, it was my birthday weekend, like, I remember that vividly, like, Matt, please just contact John Wallace, because I'm dealing with like very angry guests who have like, you know, a hot tub that's not working or something, like, I don't know. But he did reach out to John Wallace and I didn't even like follow up with the situation, because I, again, like, we had already gone through the rezone in my head.
Right.
And so that is one letter that I like absolutely didn't know about. But, uh, but he, you know, he has the receipt from reaching out to John Wallace with no reply. And that probably should have been a red flag, but I didn't follow up with Matt either on whether, like, what that reply was. I just figured if we didn't hear anything back, that it was handled, because it was handled.
And we've always heard back.
And we've always heard back.
So if there was a problem, he would have-
Yeah, they have all of our-
Would have let up, so, and that's one thing I wanted to ask, you're talking about sending out letters, and I think that, that is actually like of some sort of formality.
I think so.
Um, I think they have to. But we've been in constant communication with these people at this point.
I've got my email.
Over a year. And so they've got cell phone numbers, they've got emails, you know, they've got all sorts of communication. They know, they know we're at the house, you know, uh, several times, um, throughout the week or the month. So, yeah, it just seems a little strange to me to put so much weight on a letter, when there was just so many opportunities for somebody to pick up the phone or to send out an email. And, and I promise you, if my phone rang and it was the city of Cadillac and there was a problem, we'd have handled it right then and there.
Immediately.
Immediately. And we would have apologized and I certainly can, I, I know for, for fact, it just would have never gotten to this point. So again, I think the letters were a formality, but I just would have, would have assumed that maybe, maybe something else would have happened.
Yeah. Um, and again, that's like, I wanna reiterate, I'm not, we are not trying to cast blame on the city council for that, the process, that probably is normal, again, like, I, those letters just didn't make it to me.
Yeah.
They just didn't make it to me.
Probably had a better chance to make it to you if they sent it to the property.
Yeah, yeah. And so by the time we were in this lawsuit with the city, I mean, it took us a month and a half, probably two months, to like even grasp what happened. Like, you know, the back and forth between the lawyers of the city's lawyer and our lawyer, and just like understanding that letters had been sent, that we hadn't been rezoned, that there was an additional meeting that we, that had happened that denied us the rezone.
There was no representation from us at this meeting.
Because we weren't there, like, you know, like, why would they rezone us when they're like, okay, well, let's have this presentation, bye.
Nobody, clearly these guys don't care.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so they had every reason to like, yeah, so that was just a big learning curve for like the, a month and a half of us just doing an insane amount of research, being like, where did, what happened? Where did we go wrong? Like, how did we end up in this situation? And so at that point, we realized all of the wrongs, right? Like, we didn't, they, they weren't intentional. But nonetheless, they absolutely were against the status quo of, of the city of Cadillac. And we did absolutely drop the ball on not coming to that final city council meeting to go through the rezone. We dropped the ball on the, the letters that they had sent. And we realized at that point in time that like, the impression that we had of where we stood with the city, which was up to that point, that we were in good standing with the city.
Done everything right.
All of a sudden, we were like, oh, we have not only like, we're not only in not good standing with the city, but they literally hate us.
They are mad.
They are mad.
Oh.
Oh, oh my God, like, like, how do, like, what, what do I do? And so I went back and I watched, I mean, you and I both watched, every member of this project has watched the original city council meeting that we missed, that was supposed to, that we were supposed to attend after the, uh, planning department meeting where they unanimously recommended to rezone us. And honestly, they almost rezoned us without us even being there. Like, it was, it was right on the fence, like, that everyone agreed that it was the highest and best use of the property, that it's a great location, that it makes all the sense in the world to be a B and B. The reason that they had denied us in that first meeting to be rezoned to B2 was because, one, they didn't know if we were good operators, because we had just launched it. And, two, they didn't know the neighbors' opinions. Oh, and three, they didn't want to regulate us separate from how they regulated everyone else.
Because they were about to start.
Cause they were about to start regulation for the city as a law, as-
Makes sense.
Makes sense, right? So I watched back that meeting and I was like, okay, uh, we have to make everything right and we have to go above and beyond to fix those things that we, the mistakes that we had made. And so at that point in time, I dropped mailers, like, we walked around to all of the, we created a letter that went in everybody's mailbox, um, that had a QR code that opened up a video to introducing me, um, you, you know, kind of our operation, our goals with the property, and then also a QR code to a job form where they could fill out their opinion on how this short-term rental had been operating. We had been operating for a year and a half at that point. And so I reached out to the police department to see if there had been ever any noise complaints, any misconduct, any late-night phone calls, anything, which, I mean, as the operator, like, we would, you know, unless there was a call made by a neighbor that they didn't act on, we would have known at that point in time if the police had ever been involved, of course. But I just wanted that on record, that like, in the year and a half that we operated, we operated flawlessly. Like, we did not disrupt anyone, there were never noise complaints called, there were never police called, there were never big parties thrown, there just, there was never, uh, I shouldn't say there were never big parties thrown, right? I'm sure that there were bachelorette, bachelorette parties.
16-person house with the beautiful amenities, you know, pool, hot tub, so maybe there might have been-
Parties thrown.
A, a, a party or two.
But no parties thrown that ever damaged the house from our perspective, um, and no parties that had resulted in neighbors calling and giving noise complaints. And so even when we were gauging the neighbors' opinions, like, the neighbors that did reach out, the ones that are straight across the street that now we are in consistent communication with, like, she's like, I am a nurse and I need sleep and I would be bothered by loud noise. She's like, and I've lived here the entire time that this has been operating, and she is directly across from our property. And she's like, never, never any noise. Like, it's, which makes sense, I mean, we bought the property because it has a 25-foot fence around the backyard.
That's one thing I wanted to mention.
Yeah, like, we were so intentional with purchasing this property, like, because it's commercial, it can have a 25-foot's foot sound barrier around the back, which any residential property, you can only have like a six-foot fence or a five-foot fence or something. Ours is literally a 25-foot fence around the backyard to contain noise. Like, it's so perfect for a short-term rental, but, um, anyway, so I just made it our mission to address every single one of the issues that they had addressed in the meeting that we missed. Just proving that, you know, we were good operators, that we had had a great star rating on Airbnb, no complaints from neighbors, no complaints to the police department, like, just proving that we, we are professional at this, we're not, you know, sloppy hosts. And what were the other things that we had to address? Oh, they wanted to know like how it impacted the downtown as well. And so we went, of course, to all of the businesses downtown, engaged their, um, how they were impacted by it. And because the house is giant and orange, it's like very obvious for the business owners to understand the traffic that they're getting from that house, because when people are checking out at a restaurant or at a store or at a candy shop or a fudge shop or an ice cream place or the farmer's market or wherever, and you pick up a conversation, if you're staying at the property-
It's the big orange house.
It's the big orange house. And so when we were walking into the businesses, every business owner was like, oh, we get weekly, weekly, we get traffic from you guys. Like, this is something that gives us income in the winter months when nobody else is visiting here, like, nobody else is entering our stores. And so it was just unanimous support across the board. And so I collected all of that information, um, to make it right, you know, from that perspective of their concern, of why they didn't rezone us originally. In addition to that, at that same point in time, we canceled any reservation after September, we had, you know,
That we'd agreed on.
We had agreed on with the city that we were going to-
We settled.
We settled with the city, the city told us we could host guests until the end of August.
Thankfully.
Thankfully. And that we were going to cover all of the legal expenses incurred by the city for the city's lawyer to sue us. And so that was a fat check that we wrote to the city as an apology for not receiving the letters, having to open up, you know, a lawsuit with us, operating past when we were supposed to and not going to that zoning city council meeting that we were supposed to. And so since September of last year, we have been shut down. And I have been actively working on trying to go back through the process correctly. And, uh, like I mentioned at the beginning of this, you know, the best-case scenario for me is one, one of two things, honestly, I don't care which way it goes, is to be able to continue operating this as a short-term rental. I know that the city wants it under new ownership, it can be under new ownership, absolutely. Happy to sell it to somebody else who wants to run.
There's not a single partner in this that wouldn't be okay with that.
Yeah, everybody wants out.
Yeah.
Everybody's really panicked. So anyway, that's, that's, that's what's led us to this point today. And so for the last several months, although we have made those mistakes, we just have spent hundreds of hours trying to do all of the legwork for the city based on their feedback on that original meeting, um, to develop, uh, an opinion, based on their concerns originally, which are in addition to the concerns of the ignored letters. And so we're just, you know, putting our best foot forward on that. And to, you know, have the support of the DDA, um, writing letters, having all of our neighbors writing letters, having so many community members write letters, and then standing before the planning department again, asking them to, you know, recommend this rezone. They had really tough questions and they were not thrilled with, obviously, how this had all played out. And I just kind of wore my heart on my sleeve and poured my heart into that conversation and they, you know, heard me, they, they were willing to listen. And so they unanimously decided to recommend to the city council members that, um, it get rezoned. And so to see on Monday that the city council members aren't even willing to listen to the work that we've put in, to the effort that we've made to right our wrongs, to prioritize the city, I just, I have, I have to have this story told. And so here we are. And with that being said, like, I, I'm not, again, I am not asking the city council to allow me a short-term rental permit. It's not what I'm asking in this meeting at all. I just need it rezoned. So let's get into just a little bit of why we need it rezoned regardless of the short-term rental.
Yeah, this was a, uh, quite a roller coaster of a story. And the big thing to, that I got out of it was none of this was to run a short-term rental. This was all just to get a simple rezone that was already.
It's in line with the master plan.
It's in line with the master plan and the new rezoning rules and regulations. And so I just, I know we, you know, the entire time we've been caught up in, in the short-term rental part, right? And, and, and I think we continue to get bashed as, as short-term rental, uh, you know, from the community or, you know, the people that just oppose it and, and, and even some of the council members. And I just don't know if we can stress enough that we're not going for that. We're going for the rezone. And so that can kind of pivot us into, why are we going for this rezone? What is the difference between its current zone of OS2 and, and, and the zone that we're going for, which is B2? What's the difference there? Um, and, and why is this so important to you?
Yeah. So currently we are zoned OS2, which is, it was created to be a transitional zoning between busy B2 and B1 zoning, downtown businesses, high traffic, um, and residential, to be kind of a, a bridge between those two things. And so that's, I mean, our property is situated between literally the downtown strip and, and residential property. We are surrounded by apartment complexes, um, duplexes, quadplexes, you name it. And so the problem with it being zoned OS2, uh, because in the interim, right, since we've been shut down in September till now, the property has not generated any revenue. And so outside of the hundreds of hours that we have put into trying to prep for this rezone, we also have explored at length all of the things that we could do with the property that, under the current zoning, right? So we have explored long-term and midterm rentals. If you guys see the property, I mean, uh, if you're watching on YouTube, you get to see it, but it is just a massive mansion. It is not a duplex, it is not a quadplex, it is not, it's not a viable long-term rental.
We are not in Traverse City, we're not in some of these areas that maybe could, but go, go a little bit into when we were attempting to do medium and long-term rental, we, I believe, had to go through a permit issue of some sort. We had some improvements to make.
Yes.
Talk a little bit about that.
Yes. So even to prep to list it as a midterm or long-term rental, we had to pass an inspection for, for that. And that required that we put like a fence in the backyard that separates, you know, where the fire pit area is from the pool. And so we did that, we had to, you know, install all sorts of safety stuff on the inside of the house, um, in addition to what we already had for short-term rentals. There was just a, we had to have like a several inspections when it came to like the water heater and all sorts of stuff. And so it cost us maybe another six to 10 grand to like bring the property up to midterm to long-term rental standards. And so we went through that process to even prep us to, you know, potentially have mid or long-term renters in there. And I have listed that thing, I shouldn't say I, Fede, um, our property manager has just been such a trooper in this and just helping me in, in every which way that he possibly can, but he has it listed on every platform, on Furnish Finders, on ALE, on Airbnb as a 30-day rental, on, um, Zillow, on Apartments.com, like, just anywhere that you could possibly list it as long-term rental or midterm rental, it's listed. We also have called every single insurance company in Cadillac, we have called every single hospital in Cadillac. We have listed it on all of the local pages for mid or long-term rentals with zero inquiries, zero inquiries. It also could be used as an office, like a doctor's office or a med spa, we explored that. Both of those require an elevator.
Which we've had quoted.
Which we've had quoted, those.
We've explored every option.
Those, if you didn't know, um, are well above six figures to have installed for a commercial elevator. And it would destroy the inside of the house. It just, it would obliterate the inside of the house.
Well, and there's also no guarantee that any doctor's office or med spa would go there after you.
Would want it.
Yeah, after you've put that elevator in there.
Yep, yep, yep. So that wasn't a viable option, um, and we have had it listed for sale for, since September with zero offers, none, not a single one. Everyone who has any interest in buying it, uh, needs it to be B2. They, you know, even if it wasn't a short-term rental, even if somebody wanted to turn it into a wedding venue or an event space or, um, some other form of business, you know, it just, you, there's zero, zero people who are interested in it as a regular residential home or as a midterm, a long-term rental, you know, it just, there, there is no option. Um, and so we have had just roadblock after roadblock after roadblock and so, oh, and, and I've forgotten this fun little twist in the adventure. We do have people who are interested in buying it if it is zoned B2. Um, and so we went through that process with a potential buyer who was looking at running a business in it. Who needed it to be, you know, contingent, like, he would buy it contingent on it being rezoned to B2. Um, and we got to the point of doing a title search on it and come to find out, Wexford County, which is the county that Cadillac is in, had their title records hacked in November. And so Wexford County has not been able to buy or sell a single piece of real estate since November, because nobody can do a title search to see if there's any liens on the property. So even if we had a buyer today, even if we wanted to sell it today, even if we had a residential buyer who wanted to live in it full-time, we couldn't sell it.
Right. Because if they're gonna, if they're going to finance it, you have to do a title search.
You have to do a title search and so nobody will lend on it. And so not only am I not allowed to run it, I, I've exhausted every effort under the current zoning. I have addressed every single issue that the city council presented on their first time around. I have listed it for sale and found a potential buyer contingent on it being rezoned to B2. Still can't sell it, still stuck with it.
Final nail in the coffin.
I need to admit it, cause I will cry over that. It's, my back is so against the wall, it hurts. So with all of that being said, I am just, I just want it rezoned to B2, um, because even for us, it's like, even if we can't sell it because of this title issue that has existed since November of last year and everyone's like, oh, it'll be handled in three to four weeks, we're at.
Three to four months.
We are at three months and it's, it's not handled and I, I, I can't sell the house. With no end in sight, no, yeah. Even if they didn't want us to run it as a short-term rental, like, at least give us the option to run it as a venue or as like something, like, something else, something else. Um, and so our hands are just really, really tied. And after the meeting on Monday, after, you know, we were just proverbially kicked in the teeth by the city council, just not wanting to hear us at all. Ethan has this wonderful habit of making me clammy hands and I'll go and shake everybody's hands when, when we get bad news and people need to see our faces. It's great advice, but it's not fun anytime. I mean, when people shake my hand when I'm in that state, I'm like, literally shaking, like, I'm sure they can feel it. They're like, what in the world is this wrong with this girl? But we went straight up to the city council members and, and explained some of that. And, and that we have just exhausted every single effort and so I just, I'm so desperate for them to hear the entire story because I, I am very ready and willing to sign anything that you want me to that says that we will not go for the short-term rental permit under the current ownership. I know they're upset with Matt's behavior. I, I, I hear them, I understand, I'm sorry, I just, I, I promise we won't go for the short-term rental permit with the current ownership. Do I think that this property should be a short-term rental? Yes, 1,000% I.
Belongs to the public.
It belongs, it belongs to the people of Michigan, like, it is such a gem for Cadillac, it is such a work of art. People have traveled from all over and chosen not to go to Traverse City, chosen not to go to Petoskey, not to go to some of these bigger places and spend their money, but instead have chosen to enjoy this property. And we still, like, even with it shut down, we have people who are sending us emails directly who are like, can I stay at this property? You know, and we're like, I'm so sorry, you can't. And like, again, if that's not what Cadillac wants it to be, like, I am okay with that. Like, I'm okay with them saying no. Granted, I think it's the highest and best fees for the property. I think they have an obligation to like, honor that, you know, and, and not have things in the city that don't need to be an eyesore, be an eyesore.
Right.
But I just, in this meeting, I just want it so bad to be rezoned to B2 so that we just have options. Because as it stands today, our only option is just letting it rot. I mean, right now, we're exploring sober living facilities and group homes and that's not profitable. I mean, it might break even, but then, like, the neighbor, if there are neighbors who, or community members who are upset about it being a short-term rental, like, do they want it to be a sober living facility and group home more?
Right.
Like, is that really?
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know, but, um, but yeah, we're just, we're just at the end of our rope and I just so desperately want it to be rezoned to B2 and I just want people to hear the story and I want, I want to believe that the world, a world exists where you're able to right your wrongs, where you're able to say, I'm sorry, where you're able to go back and fix things. I, you know, I, we have not been perfect in this. I'm not going to suggest that we have been perfect in this by any stretch of the imagination, but I will stand on the corner of the fact that we have done everything to make it right with the city of Cadillac. And to just not even be given the opportunity to say that, just, it just makes my head explode.
Yeah, yeah. Wow, powerful. I've got one quick question that somebody, a, uh, resident of Cadillac had mentioned the other night. It's a, it's a term being thrown around, I've heard it a time or two in some of the meetings. And, and we'll wrap this up here in just a minute, but I just wanted to go over this one because, again, I've heard it several times, spot zoning. What is spot zoning? Why do people keep saying it? And how does this or does this not apply to this house?
Yeah, I mean, we've addressed this a little bit earlier, but, uh, but yes, that is the number one pushback from, from, we had two people show up or maybe three people show up to the meeting on Monday to just vocalize their distaste for us specifically, and their distaste for this potentially being a short-term rental. And, um, and they're suggesting that, you know, if they do allow this rezone, that it is spot zoning, which means that like, say you have, um, a cul-de-sac that's all residential properties and somebody's running a short-term rental, that, you know, if the city were to approve a rezone, it would be all residential and then one B2 zoning or like all residential and one OS2 zoning. And so it doesn't, the purpose of zoning is that it, it clusters specific types of properties near one another so that they can coexist in peace, where you don't have a Dollar General right next to a residential property, right? And so that, that's been thrown around a lot, that people are suggesting that if Cadillac does decide to allow us to rezone to B2, that this is just another example of them doing spot zoning. But we, our property literally shares a wall with B2 zoning. Like, and it is part of the master plan to be rezoned to B2 zoning anyway. Granted, who knows if that master plan will ever freaking come out, because it's been two years since I was told it was introduced, right? And it's supposed to happen every five years. And so it seems like there's some internal city drama around the master plan that doesn't have anything to do with us, but, but we can't wait on that. Like, I can't wait for that mass, I can't wait three years, two years, however long it's going to be before they implement that master plan to have this property rezoned, because it will rot before then. And so, no, it's not spot zoning. It literally aligns with the master plan and we share a wall with B2 zoning. It is just a, a natural extension of a city, um, experiencing growth and that should be a really good thing. But I think it's just people that don't want to see this as a short-term rental. And again, like Cadillac did a great job enforcing their regulation, like, they shut, like, literally the, the person who stood up and talked against us in this meeting, they were like, you've shut down 20 other properties, like, this is the last one. And I'm like, you've gotten rid of your actual problem of, of the short-term rentals that are in residential zones that are neighbored up against full-time homes, like, we are, like, there is, there's no residential property that we butt up against. All of them are duplexes and quadplexes. It's multifamily and then we have a bookstore next door and then a pizza joint, like, it is, it's in commercial. So, um, the spot zoning argument to me is just like, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I, I feel the same on that. I just, I just heard it the other night and I've heard it several times, so I wanted to go over that. Anything else before I kind of wrap up and ask my final question, is there anything else that you kind of wanted to mention? I mean, we've covered quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think so. I, I just, we are at the end of our rope when it comes to this project. I just would hate to see the result of this be that this property becomes decrepit in the city. And, and I know that there's a lot of tension with the city of Cadillac, council members, the community. I mean, we've seen that in the meetings that have nothing to do with ours and how upset the community is with how the city council is treating them and their situations as well. And again, I don't want to start a, I don't want to be at war with the city council, even though we are, like, I, I think that we capture way more winds with honey than vinegar, but if you are listening to this and you are a member of the city of Cadillac, the meeting on the 18th, Monday, February 18th, is the day that I need people to show up and I need people to vocalize that they are just in support of this getting rezoned. Like, if you have a love for architecture, if you have a love for entrepreneurs just really trying to do their best, if you have a love for fair treatment in these situations of just wanting to be heard, I just, I need to fill that room with people who support us just for the rezone. I'm not asking you to support us for short-term rentals. I, you can be anti-short-term rental and still want to see that property live on to not fall apart and be an asset to the city and be an asset to the other businesses. And my request is just, I'm going to be opening up the property two hours before the meeting. I'm going to host a tea party, my Cadillac tea party. Clever, even though I spelled the T early. And I just want to walk over there and I just want to make a splash, because I'm not going to get a public hearing. The meeting on the 18th, they, they're not giving me a public hearing. I only can comment in the public comment. I've only got two minutes to give my spiel and so that's why we're recording this podcast, because I just don't know any other option that I've got and I just, I'm not going to give up now.
Wonderful. What if, what if a city council member wanted to come look at the property?
Anytime.
Okay.
Anytime, as long as they're going to be kind.
Come look at our beauty and, and see what we see. Is there anything else that we can ask listeners, followers, citizens, council members? Is there anything else that we can ask?
I mean, all we can do is write letters and show up and that's it. Like, I, I want this broadcasted everywhere. Like I said, I want it to show up on the news, I want it to show up on local Facebook groups. I'm very ready to just hand this head on and, and try and change the narrative that we are some big bad wolf, that this is some big investor that has a lot of money. This will sink us in more ways than one if we do not fight for this with all we've got. And I just don't want the first property that we ever raised capital on, that we ever brought investors on to be one that sinks us. I just would love to see us walk out of this alive and with a lot of lessons and with, you know, mistakes made and corrected and.
And a win-win.
And, and a win-win. I mean, I don't think that there's, you know, I, I want it to be a win for the city and I want us to not be stuck with a property that we can't do anything with.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has to lose for both to win.
Yeah.
Okay, what if somebody can't make it to the meeting but wants to go, wants to show support? What are, what's our plan there?
I will have the address of where you can send letters to the city council. That is the best way to communicate with them. Like I said, I've, you know, I've collected probably, I don't know, 20 letters at this point, 30 letters at this point from community members, um, that we have already sent to the city council, but it has to be really loud before the 18th because they are absolutely currently drafting up paperwork to make sure that I don't even get to be heard publicly.
So from what I understand, these meetings, you get a public comment in the beginning and you get a public comment in the end. And typically the public comment in the end is after everything's been decided on and judged on and everything. So we need public comment in the beginning. And so we don't, you know, if you wanted to come, show your support, um, pro-rezone. Um, I know it's, we're asking a lot from people. I get anxious, you've heard me go up there, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been. I know it's, we're asking a lot from people. I get anxious. You've heard me go up there. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been side by side with you the entire time and I still don't know the whole honey and vinegar thing. I'm more maybe of a vinegar guy.
We know.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, we're asking a lot for somebody to, to walk up to that whatever.
Podium?
Podium. And, and you don't have to make some big splash or announcement or anything. You've just got to let them know that you followed along, you, you, you understand the situation and you believe that the best use for that property requires.
B2 zoning.
B2 zoning. That's all you have to say. It doesn't have to take long. You don't have to do much. And the same thing for the letters. If you send letters to city council members, it doesn't have to be a big extravagant spend all day on it type of thing. It simply has to be, I support 128 East Pine Street, Cadillac, Michigan, to be rezoned from OS2 to B2.
Yep.
That's all we're asking.
Yep. And I'll include for the YouTube video, if you're watching on YouTube, a QR code to just scan for the proper email and address to send it to, to make it easy for everyone. I hate asking for help. I hate it.
It's hard.
I am such a, I don't need anyone, I can do it myself, I can fix this, you know, I can handle it. I prefer to wear the weight of the world on myself as opposed to trying to share it with others. But this is just one that I can't get across the finish line without help.
I think a lot of people would be happy to help. They've seen the, they've heard the story, the journey. And I believe a lot of people will be out there to help, so. Perfect. Well, thank you so much. I think that, I think that went very well.
We'll see. We'll see on the 18th, but if you're listening, we appreciate you. Just trying to keep it real, trying to make miracles happen through the internet. So we appreciate you listening. Share this if you can, if you have anyone that you know in the city of Cadillac that would be willing to come out, send this to them. If you're not from Cadillac, you are more than welcome to still come to that city meeting and show support. We've seen in these city meetings, people from all over end up there frustrated with however the issue impacts them as well, so. I just don't know that I'm going to be able to get this across the finish line without a really big splash on the 18th. And I just need people to show up. And that's it.
All right.
All right. Thank you.